You guys hang with me. Get out and be inspired. This is a good time of year to do that. If you can't make a trip to London, all you have to do is get out this time of year and look at the new blooms. Look at all the pretty flowers. Even in your grass seed, you probably have some flowers in your grass seed. Just get out and look at all the new things that spring is bringing out and you'll get inspired. There we go. It's hard to paint without inspiration. You have to find something you love and get excited about, or it's just not going to turn out that good. I paint for my job and sometimes I don't want to do what they're having me do and you just don't do as well. You know, I have to, it's my job, but if it's not your job and you're just painting for fun, for something to do, paint what you want to paint. You'll do so much better. Right now, I have to kind of do what I'm told, but one day, when I retire, I'm going to paint what I love and that's all. And hopefully, I'll be a better artist. One artist friend of mine didn't start painting until he was 70 years old and he's one of the best we have in our area. And he is a wonderful artist. Had the gift all along and didn't use it. He's using it now and he is phenomenal. So don't think, "Well, I'm too old, I'll never learn." That's not true. If it's in ya, it's in ya. Was really, really impressed with Da Vinci. He had his own room in the National Gallery of Art in London. And Da Vinci painted large scale and his realism was phenomenal, to say the least. That was really, really breathtaking to see. And some of the sculpture we saw was just unbelievable. And these are free museums. If you ever get over there, they're free to the public, so you can go in at no charge and just look at some of the best work that's ever been done. They ask for donations. All right. Now, I'm going to put another layer of crud on these brick because there's really layers and all kinds of different textures and values to this brick. So I'm going to go back over some of this, define it a little bit more. I will put some grout in in just a little bit. Get right up to the edge. That's why I use a nylon brush a lot of times. It takes you, can take you right up to the edge. Now, if you go over, big deal. It's just paint, you can go right back over it. Right up to the edge of my moldings here. It's real dark under here because you've got so much architecture. Let's make that real dark. Get my umber. It's darker down here. Okay, I'll let that dry just a second. While that's drying, I'm going to get a smaller brush and I'm going to go, you have to do background and pull this way. So I'm going to kind of get into the reflection of my window a little bit. And I'm trying to think, we've got a little house and it's really, really dark right in here. Let me get some blue out. These are the balm, these big, big tubes of paint. They cost quite a bit, but they'll last you a lifetime. Going to do a little sky. Just needed a tiny little bit of blue. Let's see, I'll change to a smaller brush because we just need a little bit of sky. More white than blue, but it's right back up in here. Using my mineral spirits to thin it out. This is a reflection in the window. That's all this is. And to be honest, I feel a little bit rusty. I didn't paint for a whole week. And I feel just, it really will do that, too. It's kind of like playing piano. If you don't practice, you get rusty. I normally paint every day, except like on the weekends, I don't paint. But if you don't, you'll get rusty. There we go. Just kind of showing a reflection in the background. I'm going to add some more white. Doesn't have to be perfect because like I said, this is just your reflection. All right. Now, going to get this angled brush and I'm going to start sort of placing what I'm seeing in the window. It's really dark here. And this helps our, this is going to help our flowers really pop, too. Make sure your brush is sharp. If you have to go buy more, go buy more. But your tools when you paint are the most important thing. And really and truly, you can buy a pack of new brushes, most art stores, you know, three and four dollars. You don't have to get top of the line, especially if you paint as much as I do, you go through some brushes.
If everyone can have their seats, we'll get ready to get started here in just a second. Good evening. I'm Andy Hall, Vice President of Government Relations for Ballot Health and also Vice Chairman of Government Relations for the Bristol Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Bristol Chamber, welcome to the 2019 Bristol, Tennessee School Board and City Council Candidate Forum. We are so glad you're here to listen and to support those in our community who have stepped up to run for an elected leadership position within the city. The election of our school board and city council officials is vitally important to our community. The leaders chosen by our electorate will discharge their legal and constitutional authority by guiding Bristol, Tennessee city and schools during their four-year term. Voting is a privilege that should not be taken lightly. This forum is designed to inform voters of the candidates' thoughts on the specific questions they are asked tonight and it may be used as one tool to assist individuals in deciding how to cast their ballot. We hope you're able to spend a little time with each candidate during the earlier meet and greet session to get to know each candidate. Before we get started, I want to thank the City of Bristol, Tennessee for the use of the facility for this evening. We'll start out the event with the Bristol, Tennessee School Board Candidate Forum, followed by the City Council Candidate Forum. The floor will not be open for questions or debate at any point during tonight's event. All questions have been submitted by the Bristol Chamber of Commerce Board membership. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to thank the 2019 Bristol Chamber Government Relations sponsors, their ballot health, Bristol Motor Speedway, and Vulcan Materials. Now, an event wouldn't be an event without some rules for the evening. So let me quickly go over the rules. Disruptive behavior such as rallying, cheering, whistling, heckling, or talking during the program or over candidates will not be allowed. No signs or hats, noise makers are allowed in the auditorium. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium either.
Unless you come up here, apparently.
That's true. Security will escort violators, and I said I'll be the first one, from the auditorium in building. We reserve the right to ask an attendee to leave. At this time, please welcome Beth Reinhardt, President and CEO of the Bristol Chamber of Commerce, who will be tonight's moderator.
Huge thank you to Andy Hall. He has been a tremendous asset to this community and certainly to the Chamber of Commerce. You do a great job leading us in our government relations endeavors. Welcome and thank you all for being here and thank you to all the candidates. I do have a couple of folks to thank before we get started. Tommy Doughty, where are you Tommy? Back here. Tommy's our Government Relations Chair and has done a remarkable job pulling tonight together, has worked with all of our candidates and we appreciate all that you do. And we have Ms. Amy Shuttle over here who is, sorry, I'm cracking when I say that. Amy is going to be our timer for the evening and we'll do a great job with that as well. So let's get started. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the format. So each candidate will get one minute to introduce yourselves, one minute to answer each question, and then two minutes to close remarks. Amy will be helping you with, with the timing of this. So as you answer a question, we will alternate who goes first and we have you seated according to how you're listed on the ballot. We will start in that order and then go to your left and I'll help guide you as we go through that. Any candidate may ask me at any time to repeat the question and I will gladly do so. So the questions were randomly, will be randomly drawn each time and they have not been shared with candidates or anyone else prior to tonight. So without delay, I want to introduce our participants tonight. And again, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you all step up to run for elected office. That's a huge sacrifice and I appreciate that you all are willing to do so and to serve this community. So let me introduce each of you as you're listed on the ballot. We have Mr. Eric Cuddy, Mr. Jimmy Ray Dornell, Mr. Derek Linkus, Mr. Frank Slaughter Jr., and Mr. David L. Welch. So we, as you know, we have two open seats for school board in this election cycle, so we have five candidates running for two open positions. As I mentioned, Amy will be assisting with the timing tonight and the lights to let you know where you are in your answers. Candidates, not only in the interest of time, but also out of fairness to you, I ask that you note and that you understand that the time limit for each phase of answers will be strictly enforced. You have one minute per question, so watch for the yellow light. The green will come on when you begin your answer. The yellow light will come on after the first 40 seconds and then that will stay on for 20 seconds and then the red light will come on noting that your time has ended. So, y'all ready? Amy, are you ready?
If we say no, does it still go on?
That's your choice. All right, so let's begin with the, let's do opening comments first. So we'll begin with Mr. Cuddy and as soon as you begin, Amy, we'll begin timing.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Cuddy and I'm so excited to be running for the Bristol, Tennessee School Board. I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol, Tennessee and I'm a product of the Bristol, Tennessee Schools. I graduated from Tennessee High and then went on to East Tennessee State University on a full-voice scholarship where I obtained my degree in business with a concentration in consulting and then a minor in music. I'm now a local business owner and I'm raising my four daughters along with my wife Lindsay in a town that I love and a school system I'm proud to have been educated in. In the upcoming school year, I will have a daughter at Tennessee High who will be a junior. I have a seventh grader at Vance, a fifth grader at Hanksfield, and then my youngest child will be in kindergarten in just a couple of years. I am a parent and a community member who wants to see the best for our young people and the opportunities they have while in our system and once they've entered the workforce or head to college. I look forward to being able to serve and give back to a community that has given so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dornell.
Welcome. Before I start, I'd like to thank the Bristol Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Tommy Doughty for hosting this candidate forum. My name is Jimmy Dornell and I am running for school board. I'm a neonatal respiratory therapist for ballot health. I have two teenagers that attend Tennessee High. One will be graduating this, this May. And we actually have a foster family. One of those just started Vance Middle this past February. I'm running for school board because I think I can help and know that I should. One way we can begin to bridge the gap is by imploring better communication. I feel like by this, I mean, we live in an area with high poverty and limited resources and training on how to teach these kids, so we could vastly improve in this area by just using poverty research that already exists. We just need the access. We have the educators already who realize this is an issue and want to help. This is just one reason why I'm asking for your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Linkus.
Yes, my name is Derek Linkus. I'm Bristol-born and raised, lived in Bristol all my life. I actually was a product of the Bristol school system as well. I went to Holston View Elementary School, Vance Middle School, and then graduated from Tennessee High. I then attended King University, at that time it was King College, but attended King University on athletic and academic scholarship. I then graduated from King with a degree in business with a concentration in accounting and finance. Once I graduated from King, I went, I started my career at East McCray Union. I've been currently there for 12 years now, or actually a little over 12 years. As I actually worked there as a branch manager. And I've been, I've been married to my beautiful wife for 12 years next month and we have three wonderful children together, two of which are in the school system now at the Voca Elementary School. And then one that'll be, my little boy will be in the school system in about a year and a half. And I also want to say that I actually am on the school board currently. I was appointed in September of 2017 by the City Council and I've loved every minute of it.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you all for being here. It's an honor and a privilege to do this. My name is Frank Slaughter Jr. I'm a son of Bristol, a product of the school system. I went to Tennessee High, University of Tennessee at Knoxville, graduated in finance, then to Nashville School of Law. I've been practicing law for over 22 years here. I'm proud to call Bristol my home. I have a daughter, she's eight. She goes to Holston View Elementary School. She plays soccer, she's in choir, she's in Girl Scouts. And one thing, I'm an attorney, I'm going to be brief and I don't, I'm not going to try to spend all the time. Why am I running? Why? We have a lot of challenges. We've got Vance Middle School coming up. But let's talk about funding, okay? That's big. If we had, if you, if it was raised at $300 more in your property taxes, that's less than a dollar a day, you could itemize, if you itemize, you could deduct it at least. We need school resource officers. Police presence equals protection, lowers crime rates. We don't have school resource officers in our elementary schools. We need those. I rode to Damascus King when my daughter's friend became homeless and I'll get to that in the closing. I told you I'd be brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Hello. I'm the outsider, which is a normal feeling for me. I did not grow up in Bristol. My family, wife, and three children, we moved here in 2000 to be employed by King University as, King College in those days. I serve as the Associate Pastor for First Presbyterian Church and the primary reason I have been on the school board for eight years, two terms already, and this will be my third, if so elected, is an opportunity to give back to the community and serve. We are wild advocates for public education. I have come up through that in the school systems in Boston, ergo the strange words I use, or at least the tones to those words. Louisville, Kentucky, national public schools, and want to give back and that's my primary purpose for running. So, thank you.
Thank you all. Now, the first question. I'll ask the question and then we'll begin with Mr. Dornell first. Governor Lee has been a vocal proponent of school vouchers, which he refers to as education savings accounts. What is your position on school vouchers and how would they affect Bristol, Tennessee city schools?
Is that supposed to be?
Mr. Dornell.
Oh, okay. Well, for the public school vouchers, I believe that Governor Lee started that and they were both passed with both legislators today. In fact, the Senate saw that. But I'm definitely against that because other states have not been successful with the voucher programs. It takes funding away from the public schools with those resources that we already have and they're already limited. If we take even more from that, we're even, even hurting our children's education and teachers will have to even put out more of their own money to be able to give things back to the classrooms. And I know that I have a lot of educator friends already who are definitely opposed to that because they put so much money and time into the classrooms and I think that's awful that they're having to do that whenever we can.
Thank you. Anyone, and please, if you want me to repeat the question as we go down, please let me know. Mr. Linkus.
Yes, and I just want to first say that I am actually opposed to the education savings account. It was actually last board meeting, Dave and I actually signed a resolution to contact with, to let the legislators know that we are opposed to this and that us as Bristol, Tennessee city schools were not supporting this. And yeah, it goes down to funding, you know, it's, it's $125 million in a few years that's going from, if it would have been going to public education, going to private education, that's huge and that's what could go into our school system and you're taking away from, or they're taking away from our schools' public education that I think that's just, that hurts our students, teachers, and just the whole community itself. And that's why, yes, I am opposed to this and I will, I will continue to contact legislation to let them know my stance on this and I urge the community as well to contact their legislators to let them know the stance on this as well.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
I oppose it. And like these two gentlemen said, it's going to take away. So where are we going to get it? Are we going to have to raise more money? I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I'm not going to be the odd man out. No, I, I also oppose the voucher system also for the reasons that have been noted, funding. But there's another principle that is often lost in that and that's the reality, there's not a level playing field for the schools, the charter schools, or other schools that are funded through the voucher systems, do not have to mandate or keep up with the same requirements that the public schools do, whether or not you're advocates of the ongoing testing and so forth, and also are selective in who they will allow to attend. And so often the groups that are least taken care of are the special needs classifications of students. And so my opposition stems both from a finance standpoint as well as from the needs of students. As an advocate in the Board of Education, I don't believe it serves the better population of, the wider population of students well through that kind of funding.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy.
Well, I'm wholeheartedly against it. I think it's a horrible bill. I hate that our governor even addressed it. You can't take $125 million out of the public school system. I don't care what you say. When you take those type of funds away, if we may not fill it next year, two years, three years, it will begin to trickle down. When that happens, you'll see programs like our CTE programs, our music program, our art programs. Worst-case scenario, we may lose teachers because the funding is no longer there to support our public schools. Imagine what Bristol, Tennessee school systems could do with only 1% of that $125 million. Imagine what any school system in the state of Tennessee could do with just 1% of that $125 million. Instead of pumping money into the private sector, into the charter schools, we need to be pumping money into those schools who are failing. Now, I'm thankful that Bristol, Tennessee city schools is a very strong system and we have great leaders and great educators, but I'm totally against it. It makes no sense and if elected, I will make sure when those, when it begins to trickle down and we begin to lose those funds, I will work hand-in-hand with city council to get those funds back into the school system.
Thank you. Question number two, we'll begin with Mr. Linkus on this question. With the challenges we are facing with the reduced numbers in our workforce of certified trained trade skills, how important is a strong partnership with our business community for educating and training a CTE or career in technical education-based workforce? Why and please explain?
Yes, I think it's, it's huge. You see a shift where like people, the students and the community see that, that college and university is not, I mean, it's a great thing, but also you see more students going to the CTE, or going straight into the workforce. And having that partnership with other companies helps those students become ready and prepared to be, go straight into workforce. And I think it's great for us to have more growth there. And Deidre Pendley and her group does an... her group does an awesome job with that CTE program, but yeah, there is more growth. And I would love, if elected, to be, continue to, to push for that and have those partnerships with the businesses around, because that's, those are our future leaders, those students in the community, and, and that's what we need to continue to focus on, and that's, that's what it comes down to.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
I agree, but also it's going to take some money, too. These things will cost some money, and we've got to make priorities. You know, roads have potholes. We can avoid potholes. Kids are our future. We've got one shot. We, let's make it count. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
My response is going to be also in agreement with the candidates before me. The sociological shift in our culture, when I went to school, everybody wanted to go to colleges as a means for a better end in life, and as we are recognizing that pendulum has come back to, that we need and have, uh, high skill needs in our workforce, whether that's computer-driven or use of machineries that are, are highly technical. And the reality is, as already been expressed, the funding for that has been somewhat limited, so you have to get into partnerships so that we also know what we're educating for. The landscape or the training is changing faster than our students are really being prepared. And so it needs to be a partnership with the businesses that, in our community, but broader. Uh, this last fall, the Tennessee School Board Association in Nashville met, and the most successful systems are those who have high-level partnerships with businesses in their community that are figuring out how to get students from whatever school into those and back to the school for that training. So we're, we're large advocates for it here in Bristol.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy.
I'm so thankful for our CTE program. Mrs. Pendley, who is the director of that program at Tennessee High, has done an outstanding job. We even have a young man who will be graduating just a couple of weeks from Tennessee High, who already has a full-time job with Wallace Automotive, that's a good-paying job. Not everybody wants to go to college, and that's okay, but we've got to make sure for the ones who don't want to do that, that we have the resources available to supply them with the, the training they need. And as far as the funding, as, if I get elected as a school board member, I will go to those private companies with, within the area to ask for those funds. My father-in-law, years ago, when Mr. Marshall was over the welding department in our, uh, trade school there at Tennessee High, he donated two welding machines, almost $15,000 in welding machines, so those young men would be ready to come out into the workforce as welders. Welders can make almost $40,000 a year here in our city, so it's important to go, as a board member, to go pursue those private businesses who would be more than willing to help out our students, to be ready to train them, and to have good employees as they're coming out of the high school.
Thank you. Mr. Darnell.
Yeah, I would have to agree with everyone up here. I think that a bigger boost in, uh, the increase with trade classes are what we need. Uh, my oldest is actually not going to college. He is going to do the TCATs program, uh, to become a mechanic, because he thinks that the traditional route is not for him, and I agree with him because there's so much that you could do with, like, trade education these days, and Bristol has, like, the possibility of becoming like a huge manufacturing place, because we have all of the availability, uh, here, uh, but I guess people are kind of hesitant because we don't offer enough qualified students that are graduating, uh, to fill those positions if they brought them in. Thanks.
Thank you. On to question number three. Mr. Slaughter, you'll answer this first. Research indicates that the overall educational attainment of a community drives the economic prosperity of that community. What is your vision for supporting education in Bristol, Tennessee?
Funding. Money, and how we get there. Like I said, you know, when companies come around, they're also going to look at crime rate, you know, and if you have school resource officers, that creates a presence there, okay? I mean, that, I can't say, I, I, I mean, it, it just, it's at my heart, my daughter's in third grade, okay? Um, unfortunately, she goes to school with some police officers that come and pick up her, her kids. Uh, the dynamic has changed. It's not just about fistfights anymore, it's scary. So, safety, obviously, but, um, that, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
My response is going to be, I think that that has been easily seen in the ongoing cooperation, both with the current school board and city council, recognizing that it's a partnership that makes that happen. Our slogan is "Career and College Ready," and it's, it's a desire to coordinate that and, as we've already expressed with the career technical education opportunities, is to make opportunities for students that will better the larger community, so that I think that, uh, as, as, as Mr. Slaughter has said, funding is a huge issue with that, but it's the reality that it takes both the city council and the Board of Education to do that together, and so I'm pleased with the way that is ongoing currently.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy.
Beth, can you repeat the question one more time?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Research indicates that the overall educational attainment of a community drives the economic prosperity of that community. What is your vision for supporting education in Bristol, Tennessee?
Well, I think one of the biggest things is technology. Uh, I've had many conversations with a number of our teachers, uh, within the school system, and their biggest complaint, especially in the grades that are under the fourth grade level, that do not have, uh, the laptops like the, the fourth grade and above have, um, they can't do their jobs well, um, because, uh, first, second, and third grade classes may just have two or three iPads, or one or two laptops, and, uh, so we've got to make sure we're giving those teachers and those grade levels the best opportunity to be able to teach those children with all the new resources and all the things those teachers are learning in the conferences that they go to. And then also, on that note, we've got to take care of our teachers. Uh, they are the lifeline of our schools, they're the lifeblood. We, we trust them every day with our children, and, uh, so they need to make sure they have an ear, uh, that they can speak to, and if elected, I'll, I'll be that ear for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darnell.
Okay. I would also have to agree with Mr. Eric Cuddy here. I think that one of the biggest things that we can do is focus our funding more on our education. Uh, I mean, the much-needed groundbreaking with Vance Middle, uh, costs $32 million, and, but that's going to be like a huge improvement for us in the community. Uh, I think that was a great thing that was established by the school board and the city council to come together on that, even though it did take 10 years of planning, but I think that's going to be huge for our community. Uh, I think another thing would be, um, some of the things with teachers and communication. I think that we can focus more on educators, because some of their expectations of the mid-year implementations are difficult to meet, uh, and evidence is seen with the limited planning with meetings and trainings that they have to attend during those periods, so it's going to be a little bit harder for them to do, uh, their proper education, which is their job, um, because they're having to do so much with the, the planning and scheduling stuff. And if we can limit that during their, their time for the mid-year to focus more on the rest of the year, I think that would be a big improvement.
Thank you. Mr. Lenkis.
Yes, and I would have to say, um, to Dave Welch's comment, you know, the, it's, I think it takes very good teamwork between the school board and the city council, because, yeah, it's, it's, you know, that's, we have to work together to have that funding and everything, and, and we have a great working relationship with each other and work well within the city, and that shows with our education. We're at a high level right now, which is great, and, and, but it is, you know, funding is a huge thing, and there's, yeah, there's things we want, you know, Frankie said about SROs, and, you know, building a CTE program up even more, and, you know, and there's also facility updates we could, we could also do, but funding does come down to it, but also, I think, you know, to be supportive of, you know, the education, you have to have community involvement, too, and, and that's huge. You've got to listen to the community, and listen to the parents, the teachers, what their needs are, and, and make sure to act on those needs and everything. So I think it's a little bit, a little bit of everything on that, but it does ultimately come down to that relationship with the city council.
Okay, thank you all. We're on to our next question. And Mr. Welch, you'll begin this one first. Recently, our school facility study was updated, which gave the school board options for our elementary schools. One, build a new elementary school and consolidate five elementary schools into four at a cost of 19 to 21 million. Or two, spend 2 to 4 million each renovating the four older elementary schools. Which option do you recommend and why?
My preference is always to have something new as opposed to, um, taking something we have currently in, that our school facility buildings, other than Fairmount, is, are, are 1950s and 1960s, and so their structures are not only just old, but the reality of how you use those structures are antiquated as well, with the use of technology that you have to retrofit in there. The idea of, um, two of those are, are multi-level, and, and how do you have a special needs student in a multi-level field? You have to build other structures for there, whereas if you can go and build something new, addresses the needs currently that hopefully then also will address the next 40 years as the schools that we've had have served so well in that respect. Um, so that, it comes down again as this idea of funding, do you want to spend a little now over a long period of time, or do you want to spend more now that would allow not to have to spend perhaps as much? That's my preference, is to build something new that would meet the needs for now and moving forward, and not trying to continually retrofit or put Band-Aids on larger needs and projects.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy.
I hate to use the word funding, because I feel like, like, that's all we're hearing tonight, is funding, 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 but unfortunately, it does take funding. Of course, my desire would be to be, to see new schools, uh, in our elementary, but unfortunately, we've got to be good stewards of what we've been given, uh, financially, financially speaking. So we've just took on a $31 million project with the middle school. We bought a number of properties to make room for that middle school, so unfortunately, right now is not the time to fork over another 20 million or so, uh, to build a new elementary school. So what we have to do, we've got to make sure, uh, we're repairing the, the current elementary schools. Uh, my daughters go to Hanksfield, they've done a wonderful job of, of fixing that school up with new windows, new heating and air systems. It's, it's a beautiful school, they're redoing the gym right now, and, uh, those are just those type of hard decisions that, that you have to make, but you've got to be good stewards of what you've been given. So as much as I would love to see a brand-new school, uh, right now with the new middle school, that has to be our focus, and then just find the funding to make sure the other elementary schools can be brought up to date.
Thank you. Mr. Darnell.
Uh, I would have to agree again with Mr. Cuddy here. I think that with building a new school, we can't really afford the funding to put out $19 to $21 million for that. I mean, they just renovated, uh, Fairmont's new wing there with the library, and there's already a crack in the ceiling. So if we have, like, the 2 to 4 billion, and we just renovate the schools that we have now, what about the rest of the 16, 17 million dollars? Why can't we use that funding to put it back into our schools rather than just build one new school, which would take maybe another 10 years to do? Um, because I think that our children now are going to be our priority, uh, as well as the future, but we really can't afford $21 million for something new and fresh just because we can. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lenkis.
Um, I would have to say that I, I like the idea of having something new, because, you know, if you have something that's been there for a while, and you do some renovations to it, there's still going to be problems there. And, and, yeah, our, our facilities group, Eda View and them, do an awesome job with their facilities. They've done some great work with our pool renovation, uh, some work at Biking Hall, and at other schools as well, like Anderson's Parking Lot, but it's, I think if you have the funding to, to build a, a new elementary school, I think that would be great to have that and be able to, to provide and give those students some technology and be able to work in a, in that new environment, because you see a new environment in the schools where there's open space learning and other things to where they can learn at a high level, and, and, and you can always still, in future years, do those renovations at the other schools as well, so, and that's my, that's probably my stance on that.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
I would concur with Mr. Cuddy. You know, it's going to take some funding, and we also need to look at, at, uh, I mean, Mr. Welch said about, you know, building a new school, and that's, that's great. Uh, there are a lot of changes in the law, there are laws that are being developed every day in education, as far as 504 plans, IDEA, all kinds of stuff out there, believe me. It's not getting smaller. Um, but, you know, if we could, uh, you know, take care of what we have for now and save for later, and then build something, yeah, we don't, you can't borrow your way out of debt, and we don't want to, like, jump into it like Virginia did. Um, but, um, all, everybody up here on this stage wants what's best, I mean, there's, but there's ways to get to it, uh, so, that, that's my position.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go on to question number five. That will be Mr. Cuddy first. To what degree are students in this district on track for post-secondary readiness, whether that be college or a technical trade school? And what are the opportunities to increase that readiness? Or where, sorry, where are the opportunities to increase that?
Well, I think I've already said it once, um, we have the best educators, I think, in the state of Tennessee, and, uh, I think our teachers are doing a fine job of preparing, um, our children, uh, for whether they're going into a trade job or, uh, college. Uh, our school system has done a great job with, uh, the technology aspect of school. Uh, they're doing a great job, uh, when it comes to the, to preparing them mentally, uh, but also preparing them, uh, for everyday life. And, uh, so I, I think, uh, as a school board member, uh, it, it's just a matter of continuing to support, to support the, the teachers, and to make sure the teachers have everything at their disposal that they need to do their job correctly. And again, that's where I'm hearing, uh, the biggest problem, is that they may not have all the tools they need to do the job correctly. So as a school board member, we've got to, uh, we've got to make sure that they have those tools in place, uh, so they can do their very best job, which, when they do their very best job, uh, then they will do, uh, it'll make our children ready, uh, for that trade job or for college.
Thank you. Mr. Darnell.
I would have to agree. I think one of our biggest, uh, opponents is the, the funding issue that we're dealing with here, and I think allocating those funds best to dealing with educators, for them to do their own thing instead of spending it on other things that we really shouldn't. Uh, like, for instance, the, the Tennessee High Stone Castle renovations. Uh, I know that there's programs that are asking other programs to, like, chip in, like, the band program, to use the money that they were given and allocated by the school board to use for their program. Uh, they're being asked to donate, like, a large sum of that to be able to renovate Stone Castle, whenever they can be using that to help these kids, uh, with band, because there's plenty of band scholarships out there for these students to go to college with, and if you're taking funding away from that, then you're losing plenty of, like, possible aspects for these kids, which I think is a bad thing.
Thank you. Mr. Lenkis.
I'd have to agree with Eric, you know, I think it comes down to the educators, and it's, they're, they're the ones that are there, the leaders to our students, and they're, they, you know, see the students day in and day out, and they prepare them. They prepare them, not only succeed in school, but also succeed at life, and to be able to prepare them for, to go to post-secondary schools. And, you know, our, our graduation rates have increased, and we, yeah, we want to continue to focus on that, to continue to see that graduation rates increase, have more attendance there, because, you know, attendance is a big thing, you want the students there so they can learn. And so those are big things, but it does come down to the educators, and we have awesome teachers. That's why, that's why Bristol Tennessee Schools is so successful, is we have the great teachers and administrators and principals, and we'll continue to do that, and, but our focus needs to be on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter.
Could you please re- repeat the question?
Certainly.
Thank you, Frank.
To what degree are students in this district on track for post-secondary readiness, whether that be college or a technical trade school? And where are the opportunities to increase that readiness?
How many people know kids that start out at tablets at three and four years old? And we got laptops being distributed at the fourth grade. I'll not start it sooner than that. I mean, there's a lot of good ideas, I think, that are there, we can increase on that. How much more would it cost for another, you know, 50, 100 laptops? I mean, let's start it sooner than later. I mean, before, and by, by the time they get to Tennessee High, they're not going to be using those laptops anymore. I mean, the way things are changing. Um, I agree, we've got great educators and, um, you know, but, um, and, and, and about, about the funding for the castle, it comes down to priorities, too. But, you know, teachers can be the greatest athletes or whatever, but unless they have the tools for the gas to put in their, you know, educational engine, that thing, then we just need to take a look at our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
This is an interesting question to me, because part of the long-range plan of the Board of Education, every five years, they, it's a state mandated requirement to have a long-range plan, and the most recent one, which is coming to a conclusion, the metric to measure career readiness or post-secondary readiness, which is both career, college, or post-secondary readiness, which is both career, college, and I remind you also, the third opportunity is military, is, is something that we continue to strive for. And obviously, if we were perfect, this question wouldn't be coming up. Yet the school system is still pushing to make that happen at even better rates. But how you measure that, how do you find where your students have gone is part of the recognition of the difficulty of measuring career readiness. And, and so it's of great importance for the current school board and will continue to be for the next school board as well. That is, as you've already heard, what our primary focus and purpose of a school board is to be college-career-ready. That's, that's our vision statement. So that you're seeing it here. Of course, we're trying to figure out how to do better at that every time. And technology is a part of that. Giving our teachers better tools is part of that. Funding is part of that. And I'll stop because my red light's on. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you. So next question, and Mr. Darnell, you will be up first. Describe an educator who has impacted your life. How will you use that experience as an elected leader to impact others?
I think one of the biggest influences in my life is my high school educator from, I'm not originally from Bristol. I'm from Rycoe, which is a small town. And they taught me really who I am. Like, he was a chemistry professor and I fell in love with math and science because of him. And he taught me how to basically shape my life that everything is not what it seems. Like, with Rycoe, it is like a really poverty-stricken area. And he gave me, I guess, the courage that I needed to get out of that area. Because it seems like once you're stuck in like a small poverty-stricken area, it's like impossible to climb out. And with his help and guidance, he just led me to become the person that I am today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus.
You know, as far as favorite educator or teachers, I would say I had a lot of them. I mean, I could go through, you know, I was a product, just like Eric, of the school system and, as Frankie as well. And, and we had, I had, went through the school system, had great leaders. And, and I learned a lot from the elementary school to the middle school and even in high school. And also, you know, with the athletic coaches there as well. They not only prepared me, you know, for school and also, at that time, you know, was all focused on going to the college, going to the college. Prepared me for that as well, but they prepared me for life, you know? Just being honest and, you know, having a high-level integrity. And that's what I try to value myself and that's what I try to represent when I'm on the school board, is to be honest and open and have that integrity to all, to all the people that I deal with. And, and that comes down to the, to the, the teachers that I, that I went through in the school system. And not only the, you know, with the Jesse High and elementary, it also went to King University as well.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter.
Got a lot of them as well, like Derek said. Of course, I never forget the Wolfpack Coach Jim Valvano's favorite statement. "I always remember where you've been, where you are, and where you're going." And that's where we're going tonight. We're all, we're all saying the funding word and that, that's, that's big. But it's so funny you asked about that because I see Coach Ken Oster here. And I remember taking him in geometry. Didn't do well many D, I think. But he was always hustling. He never, he was always hustling and always thought, you always hurry up and get there. And I, I thank you for that. He even tried to make me a quarterback and didn't have much to work with. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
You know, my response, a gift of being one of the last people to answer that is that it allowed me to think about teachers that had affected me in both middle school, high school, and elementary school. And I wanted to share some of those, but my, my time was going to be too short. But what gave me time to think about it was the reality of the relationships that were developed by those teachers, both in the classroom and then following up later. And so that's kind of how has been a part of my own life in modeling, is a developed relationship. But it doesn't just end when a student graduates from high school or from college or even leaves elementary school. It's, it's an ongoing, they challenged me as, as, I think that's what's been communicated here by these other gentlemen. They supported the decisions. They didn't let us simply get by with things. And, and so that's a model that's continued to work in my own life in both career and as an education person, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
Too many to name, but one that comes to mind, a lot of people know her, is Ms. Whittington. A lot of people called her Jenny Whittington. She was my eighth-grade English teacher at Vance Junior High. And she took a, a young, fair-skinned boy and turned him into a farmer for two summers in a row. Baling hay, cleaning out her barns, taking care of her horses. But what she was doing that whole time that I didn't realize then, but I realize now, and as I've become an adult, she instilled in me a hard-work ethic. And she instilled in me a worth, a hard-work ethic that has allowed me to be a good student in college, to be a great father, to be a great husband, which I hope my wife would say. But also to be a hard worker when it comes to running a business every day. And if elected to the school board, I can promise you, I will take that work ethic that she instilled in me a long time ago and use it every day as a member of the school board and do my very best to do the best for this community and for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we have time, I think, for two more questions. This will be Mr. Linkus first. If elected, what would you consider to be your greatest accomplishment during your tenure? How do you plan to reach this goal?
There, you know, if I was elected to the, to the position, there's a few things that I would like to accomplish. And we've touched on them a little bit already. I would, would like to grow the CTE program a little bit more because I want those students to be prepared to go straight in the workforce. And like I said before, it's, you know, those are our, our future, the students, and, and those are our future workers. And so we want them to learn the trade, you know, if it's being electrician or a welder or so on. We want them to grow that. Also, I would love to see, and this all comes down to some logistics and funding, the big thing, funding, but I'd love to see SROs in all the schools. I want the students to feel safe. I want them, the teachers, to feel safe. And that's some big things that I would like to have, happen, and that comes down with funding. And also, I would say to the, I guess, the education savings account as well, that's something I'll continue to, would continue to fight for. I think, you know, anytime you can take the funds from public education to, to give to private education, that's something I will continue to fight and talk, contact my legislators for.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter.
Also, against the vouchers as well, I would do whatever I can, reach out to whomever I can. But my, my biggest goal would be the school resource officers, making sure they're in there. And of course, you get that through the funding. Also, including increasing the attendance. I like the new program that's going on there now, which will also increase the graduation rate. So if I'm elected, I'd like to at least accomplish those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
The blessing or the virtue of being on the board already, my answer is not going to be on a specific item or agenda, although they're very important. But I think you've already seen in my conversation, the primary importance for me is the relationship that's ongoing between city council, between our county commissioners, between our Board of Education. So I think if, at the end of the, if I understood the question is, what would I have hoped at the end of the four years was primary, would be that ongoing great relationship that allowed us to accomplish many different things. You're going to hear me say this again in, in a few minutes. The primary job of a, of a Board of Education person is to be the advocate for students. And, and sure, that can come with a lot of different specific items, a new school, technology and so forth. But that is accomplished in relationship with others through funding, through planning and so forth. So if the fact that I, I finished my four years and, and my name was not attached to any building, that's fine, as long as it was good relationships with those who made changes.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
A couple of things real quick. One, it's got to be security. I may be the only one up here who has, who has received a text from their daughter, says, "Dad, we're on a code red." That's happened twice this year at Tennessee High. And I got that text twice this year. And as a parent, you can't believe what it feels like in your heart to know that they're scared. So it's got to be the number one thing that I would hope to, to get pushed through is, is security officers at all the schools and better security entrances at all the doors in all the schools. And then second of all, I still think, one of my biggest things is to create a good open dialogue with the teachers. I know I've been saying teachers, teacher, teachers a lot tonight, but they are the backbone of our school system. Without our teachers, we have nothing. And so I want to make sure that we have that open dialogue. And if I get elected, I want to make sure in those four years that they can say, wow, we have never had this type of cooperation and openness with our current school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell.
Again, I think I would like to see more trade classes offered. Like I said, with my two teenagers, they want to pursue a career that's not the traditional path with a college or university. Another thing would be to fight for the public school vouchers to not pass because that would be one devastating issue that would affect this area, I think, in a great amount. Because right now with that, it's only going to really affect like two or three counties when it first starts. But for us as taxpayers, we're going to be like funding that. And then they're planning on rolling that out to other schools. And also, I think, different things that we could do is look at social media and some of the stuff that they're doing. Like, if you see online, there's a bunch of kids, like the, the food closet, like a janitor at one of the schools had created for kids that are poverty-stricken. Stuff like that is just simple stuff that we can include in our schools that would make it better for everyone, even having clothes for kids that like have accidents and stuff. Because that would be a huge embarrassing issue. Instead of calling their parents, they can fix that right at the class. Thanks.
Thank you. I know this may disappoint you all, but this will be the last question of the evening. And Mr. Slaughter, you'll begin this question. In the Tennessee General Assembly this year, there is a strong push for elected versus appointed directors of schools. Do you prefer elected or appointed director, director of school administrators and why?
I like the current situation. I like that. I'm not for the, the election in large. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I'm also in favor of the appointed, not the elected. And the primary reason of that is when you're an elected official, you have to spend an inordinate amount of time guaranteeing that you'll be elected again. And, and I don't think that's a job of superintendent that's brought in for the purpose of running a school system is to spend a majority of their time or a significant amount of their time running an election process. I don't think that makes them more accountable to the community for which they're serving and working. And so I'm opposed to that and like the current system we have where the school board is responsible for the hiring of and, and making that director or superintendent, depending on which system you're in, be responsible then to the community directly.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
David, I'm glad to say I agree with you. I get to finally say that. Hey, I'm against elected. I think it needs to be appointed. You know, that, that's one of the main objections of being on the school board, is to review Dr. Lilly, the superintendent, whoever it may be, each year and to make sure that he is hitting the goals that have been set in place by the current school board. That's why we are elected officials. You guys are electing us and entrusting us to make sure we are hiring and appointing the best administrators that we can to, to make sure our schools are, are running the way they need to be ran and to make sure our schools have everything that they have. And I also want to go back and touch base. I am a huge proponent of the CTE program. Again, I'm so thankful for Ms. Pendley for the job she's doing. I think it's a wonderful, and also I'm very proud of our online virtual school that is ran by Ms. Whittington. And it is a, a school that many, many students in the state of Tennessee enroll through Bristol, Tennessee. And it's a very nice revenue stream for the school system that we get from the virtual school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell.
I guess I'm going to have to be the odd one out here and disagree with Mr. Welch there. I think that the superintendent should be elected. I feel that if you're a good superintendent, you don't have to be worrying about running a successful campaign the next time. Because if you're doing your job and you're good at it, then the people in the schools and your community will know that you're doing a great job. I think the school board should be elected to oversee that they are doing a good job and make sure that they maintain all the, the qualifications that they need to do it. But I think we, the people, should be able to decide who we have as our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus.
I would say that I disagree with Mr. Darnell here, but that, you know, it should be appointed. You know, that's the position, like Eric Cuddy said, is it's the position of the board to be able to, to elect, or not to elect, to appoint a, the director of schools and make sure they are, you know, they're qualified. You want to get a qualified candidate, you know? And with the elected, you might not get a qualified one that can best be the, the representation for our school system. And yes, we as a school board have to hold that director accountable. And so, yes, I think it's, I think it's the, the position of the school board to, to be the ones that elect, or to appoint that director. And that's my position.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the question portion tonight, gentlemen. Now we're going to go into closing statements. Mr. Welch, you'll begin. You get two minutes each. We'll begin with you. Same protocol, one minute forty seconds with green light, twenty seconds on yellow light, then to red. So, Mr. Welch.
Humorously, I said earlier that I'd be glad to yield any of this time, but I will share that the primary position, responsibility of a Board of Education person is to be an advocate for students, teachers, administrators, and then families. The job of the administration is to run your system. And so the, the primary job that a school board person has is policy and advocacy. And the humorous part about, for me, having served now two terms, on the first, I felt like the first four years, it took me to come to speed to understand what are the primary tasks of a Board of Education person, as well as the language of education. I think the only industry that uses more acronyms than education is military. But that's part of the learning. And so for me in this position, why would I want to serve another, a third term, another four years? Is that I feel like I've been trained, educated, and now I'm making responsible decisions and advocacy and relationship for our school system, for the administrators, as well as for our teachers and students. And so I'm grateful, if elected, to serve for that capacity for another four years.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you. I want to read some of this. I want to make sure I don't leave anything out. I would like first, Beth, thank you in the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this. And I also want to thank our great community who has given me great support so far in this campaign. My slogan for my campaign from the get-go has been "Our children, our community, and our future." Thirty years ago, I was one of those students. My father died when I was ten years old, which left my mom as a single, working mom, working two jobs. She worked hard, I worked hard, but most importantly, I had teachers that believed in me, who developed my character and who gave me opportunities for my future. I want to serve the children of our community and the educators of our community so that I can give back a fraction of what was given to me as a young man. I want students, parents, and educators to know they have someone serving on their school board who will always have a listening ear to the needs of our community and our schools. Our teachers need to see their school, more, school board members coming and, and learning about the unique needs of each classroom and each school. They need to see our school board members coming to the everyday events, such as eating lunch with a group of students or stopping by the playground and jumping into a game of four-square. It just doesn't need to be about attending the big events. One thing I've been told consistently by teachers is they don't see or hear from their school board enough. I want you to know firsthand, I want to know firsthand how I can serve our community. And if elected, I promise you, that is what I will do. I love Bristol, Tennessee. I want to see our students have every opportunity to learn, grow, and stay in this great city. If elected, I will work every day, I promise you, for our children, our teachers, our community, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell.
Again, I'd like to start out by thanking everyone for attending and the Bristol Little Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. Like I said, I'm not originally from Bristol, but I fell in love with the people and the city. I proudly call Bristol my home now and I love watching it grow. I do volunteer for a lot of extracurricular activities as a band parent and support many volunteer programs. And as a potential candidate for the Board of Education, I would like to use the experiences from my career to offer a fresh insight to the board. I believe that our school board plays a vital role in our community and I'd like to see more involvement. I want our residents to show up to the meetings and offer their valuable opinions. I think that's one of the biggest issues is that whenever they do have school board meetings, not many people show up and everyone has their opinion, so come voice it. We'd like to hear it. And I want to focus on aligning standards, curriculum, assessments, and policies. I think we should target professional development and work on sustaining these improvement efforts. I think we need to work on allocating resources strategically to support a quality institution instead of school programs having to focus a majority of their time on fundraising in order to afford the basics. I think these are a few reasons I'm running for school board, for the love of the community and to help inspire growth. We are on a good track with the reconstruction of a safer and updated middle school with Vance. I think we should continue to keep the focus on our children and our educators. And my name is Jimmy Darnell and I'm asking for your vote to be a member of our proud Board of Education. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus.
First, I'd like to thank the chamber for putting this event on. It's a great event and also all the sponsors as well to help make this event happen. And I also appreciate all those that came out and support here in the building and also via live stream or other media methods. But, you know, what we're here for is, is the students and, and the educators. And, and that's- And, and that's my passion is I want what's best for the, the students. And I want them to succeed not only in the school, but also out of the school, in life. And that's what it comes down to is preparing, preparing those students the best. And it comes, and also talking with Dave said is advocating. That's a big thing about it. Uh, being a school board member, member is, is advocating for the, for the school system. And so, and with that, it, you know, you, when you prepare them for life and everything, that goes back to where you talked about the CTE and, um, program, continue to build that because I do think that's an area to focus on. And then also, uh, you know, I've mentioned before about the SROs, I want the schools to feel safe. And that's, that's a big thing. But you know, I've been on the school board for a year, a little over a year and a half now. Loved every minute of it. I have some accomplishments, you know, we've got the school board, I mean, the, the middle school, um, happening, it's happening now. That's huge for the community. I mean, it's great for the students. It's going, it could draw more students in the area. It's huge. And that school is built with safety in mind as well, and that's a huge thing. And then, and then not only that, um, the, um, I listen to the needs of the parents and the, the teachers as well. Um, for example, I had a few parents and teachers, um, reach out to me regarding the need for guidance counselors in the schools, in all the schools. And that's something I listened to and talked to Dr. Lilly about. And you know what happened? This school year, we have guidance counselors in all schools because there was a need for that. And so I do want y'all to know that, that the need in the, when I do listen to the needs of the community and the teachers and the parents. And lastly, I'd just like to say that if elected, I would, as first, I'd like to say I'd love to have your vote, but if elected, I will give my hundred and ten percent and I will not let you down. And if you have any questions or anything, feel free to contact me.
Thank you. And final comments, closing statements, Mr. Schlatter?
Thank you. Thank the Chamber and the sponsors and you folks for coming out. I'm not spending money on my campaign. I'm running on my reputation of getting things done. Um, one thing I would always ask, I'm sure this has always happened to one, how many people have had their kid come home, their teachers are always asking for money, schools always asking for money? How many people are tired of that? I mean, if you itemize, you could at least get a federal deduction on that, okay? A hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, you know? What's it going to cost more to get that? If you look at it too, as far as the, uh, SROs, you know, everybody thinks about active shooters, you know, combine, things of that variety. But they're also into the bullying part of it too, which has also gone cyber. So if you have someone there, it's a whole lot easier to reach out. Uh, you know, police officers are there for safety, they're not there for teaching. Notwithstanding the actual drugs and just, it's just permeating everywhere. But I promise I'll do a hundred percent, have an open ear, open time, reach out, go out, whatever I got to do. Uh, kind of like Governor Frank Clement did with the 20 men from Tennessee. Uh, but I appreciate your vote and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Let's give all of these candidates a huge round of applause. As I shared earlier, we greatly appreciate the fact that you are making the sacrifice to run, to step up, to serve the community, and there's obviously a lot of passion, uh, at this table up here. So thank you all for that. Um, good luck to each and every one of you all in the election. Please remember to vote Tuesday, May 21st. Thank you all for coming. We're going to take a five-minute break and regroup for the City Council Candidate Forum.
Jimmy, good job.
Thanks. Good to meet you.[830.69]
Welcome back, we're gonna go ahead and get started. If everyone would go ahead and take their seats. Again, welcome back, I'm gonna just go over very quickly, it's probably not necessary, but just some basic rules of the evening. One is disruptive behavior such as rallying, cheering, whistling, heckling, or talking during the program or over candidates will not be allowed. No signs, hats, or noise makers are allowed in the auditorium, no food or drinks in the auditorium. Security will escort violators from the auditorium and the building, and we reserve the right to ask attendees to leave, but I know we won't have that issue at all tonight. Really pleased to be here and be able to offer tonight's event. I want to thank Andy Hall, who gave our official welcome earlier, and we're just carrying on now, but Andy's our Vice Chairman for Government Relations at the Bristol Chamber and is Vice President of Ballot Health, so Andy, we appreciate you being here. And also want to thank Tommy Doughty, right here, our Director of Government Relations for the Chamber, who did just an excellent job putting tonight's event together. And of course, our official timer, Amy Shuttle over here from the Chamber. Without further ado, let's get started. Tonight's participants in the City Council Candidate Forum are seated from left to right in the order that they are listed on the official ballot. So I'm gonna introduce each of you all before we get started. First, we have David L. Chapman, Malin Luttrell, Danny Lee McDonald, who could not be here with us tonight, Vince Turner, Miles Vance, and Steve Willinger. So again, thank you all for being here. Just for reference, this election cycle for City Council has two open seats. Tonight's format will give each candidate one minute to introduce themselves, one minute to answer each question, and then two minutes at the end for closing remarks. Each candidate will answer every question, but will alternate who answers first. We will start in the same order you are seated, which correlates with how you are listed on the ballot. Any candidate may ask me at any time to repeat the question, and I will gladly do so. Questions will be randomly drawn each time and have not been shared with candidates prior to the evening's forum. All questions were solicited and submitted for the Bristol Chamber of Commerce membership. Our Chamber of Commerce staff, as I mentioned, Amy, will be assisting us with our timing portion of the evening. Candidates, not only in the interest of time, but also out of fairness to each and every one of you, I ask that you note and understand that the time limit for each phase of answers will be strictly enforced. One minute per candidate, per question, so if you watch for, the green will begin when you start answering your question. When you have twenty seconds left, the yellow button will come on, noting that you have twenty seconds, and then the red button when you have finished. When you complete your answer and the red button pops on, if you're still talking, just complete that sentence and then close your statement, please. So after the first person begins, the next phase of questioning, the person to your left will begin that question first, and I'll indicate that as we go along. So timers, are we ready? Timer, I should say, there's one.
Introduction?
Yes, oh, that's right, sorry. Let's not get ahead of ourselves here. So, opening statements, thank you, Mr. Vance. Mr. Chapman will begin the evening with his opening statement, again, one minute, you may begin.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for hosting us this evening. Everybody here has been thanking numerous times tonight because of your while we're here. We serve at your pleasure. My name's David Chapman, I'm running for... My name's David Chapman, I'm running for Bristol Tennessee City Council. To tell you a little bit about me first, I served in the Air Force for six years on active duty. After my service on active duty, I transitioned to the Air Force Reserve for an additional three and a half years. I left the Air Force after sustaining a severe back injury. I returned to Bristol, where I decided to raise my family. When I came back, I completed my EMT at Northeast State, where I've served the city of Bristol and its residents in Sullivan County for almost eleven years. I've received numerous commendations for my military service, and I want to bring some of that knowledge back here to the city of Bristol. I'd like to ask for you to vote for me for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
Good evening, my name is Malin Luttrell, and I'm honored to be here, and I was also very excited to hear the school board nominees talk about manufacturing and their passion for career and technical education. For the past sixty-one years, I've called Bristol home, and I dearly care about our community. Here's why I'm qualified to become your next member of City Council. Professionally, my experience spans more than four decades, primarily working in skilled trades in manufacturing. It was, I was at one time an owner of a small electrical contracting business as well. In the manufacturing field, I've held numerous senior-level director positions in manufacturing operations, strategic procurement, engineering, and quality. I currently serve on the following boards and commissions: Job Corps Community Relations, Discover Bristol, Bristol Tennessee Parks and Recreation, and Bristol Baseball Incorporated. I regularly attend the meetings of both Bristol's city councils and have participated in studies and policy discussions alongside both of these bodies. I thoroughly understand the importance of negotiation and intergovernmental relations and the roles they play in a growing, fast-paced global economy.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you to everyone here tonight, and thank you to the Chamber for having us. I'm Vince Turner, I was born and raised here in Bristol. I've been married to my wife Patty for twenty-two years. We have a daughter Lauren, who attends Tennessee High School. She's a junior. I've been in the finance industry for the last twenty-four years. I'm also a small business owner. I'm invested in this city, and I want it to be said that my generation left Bristol better than we found it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
First of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to take a moment to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and I'd also like to thank each and every one of you guys here and at home watching. I'm Miles Vance, I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol Tennessee. I grew up in the public education system. I started at Avoca, I went to Vance, and I graduated at Tennessee High School. I went on to Northeast State to pursue a degree in marketing. Decided that wasn't for me, I got out and got into the workforce. I am married to my beautiful wife Stephanie, and I have a one-year-old daughter that I love and cherish, Emma. I'm the Northeast Tennessee Marketing Director for Mo's Southwest Grill. I attend and serve at real-life church. I'm an avid sports fan, I love football. I'm working on being your next City Councilman, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Willinger.
Good evening, and everybody's already thanked you, so I don't need to go through that. My name is Steve Willinger, and I'm married to Sherri Willinger, sitting right there. For forty-two years, we just celebrated our forty-second anniversary. We have a daughter Courtney, and her husband is Gary, and a forty-year-old grandbaby Zach. I'll show you pictures later. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, served in the Navy from sixty-five to sixty-eight. And I'll run down through my qualifications for City Council, while I feel you might like me. Sullivan County Networks Board, I was on their board, Bristol Industrial Development Board, SCORE Chair for ten years, Chamber of Commerce Ex officio, I was on the United Way Board, and an ENA volunteer, Crisis Center Board, Bristol Tennessee Virginia Association of Realtors, and the Community Develop Advisory Council. I'm also a optimist, and a lion, and attend the Teneba Tips. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, now, we'll get to the first question. In this question, Mr. Luttrell, you'll have the first answer. Bristol has the strongest tourism draws in the region. How do you think we should support the holistic promotion of these assets? What is the value of promoting our assets as a unified effort instead of through a fractured approach? Let me, before you start, anytime you want me to repeat a question, I'm happy to do so, please ask.
Okay, I think always that if we don't promote ourselves, no one else is going to. And I think our current staff that we have at Convention and Business Bureau and Tourism, you know, do a great job, and I think we need to continue on that path. It needs to be supported by the communities, not only Bristol Tennessee, but as well as Bristol, Virginia. And, you know, we always need to go beyond where we're at today. We've gotta reach out farther than what we are.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I believe that our, I mean, we have to promote what we have here in Bristol, and we have a lot of great things. There is, I think, the more we have that are supporting our tourism that we have here, and all we have to offer, the better. We need to just continue doing more and getting more people to our city.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Ten years ago, our downtown was not, you know, it wasn't booming, and now I can say ten years later, our downtown is booming. So it is detrimental as a city that we continue to push our downtown and push the Bristol Tennessee region. So I am all in favor of keeping the foot on the gas pedal and showing, you know, marketing our great city and marketing our great downtown to what we have. We, you know, we've got wonderful music that goes on downtown, we have the wonderful festivals, and I feel like the Chamber is the front and lines to be able, on both sides of the city, to promote this wonderful town. So I'm all in favor for our Chamber to continue promoting downtown and not taking their foot off the gas pedal, because downtown and our region have to be marketed.
Thank you, Mr. Willinger.
We have the CBB, Believe in Bristol, and a number of other organizations right here in Bristol. However, our region, regionally speaking, there are all kinds of other organizations too that promote this area, not necessarily specifically Bristol, but the region itself. So we do need a local voice. I'm totally in agreement with that, but we also have other resources that are helping us to attract more tourism from hiking and biking and rivers and fishing and those types of things. So I think we're pretty well covered, and there's always more we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Yes, Bristol's my home. I returned here, I love it, this is a great city. We've thrived and flourished over the past few years when I've been here. Bristol has Rhythm and Roots, we've got a great country music museum, we have to look at it as a regional approach. Johnson City has the Blue Plum Festival, Abingdon has the Highland Festival. These are, you know, these are great attractors to our region, and while we do have to have a strong voice promoting Bristol, we also have to look at it from a regional standpoint as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to question number two. And Mr. Turner, you'll get the first answer on this. What do you see as the single biggest issue impeding growth in the city of Bristol Tennessee?
Well, I believe that our city, we have got to have ordinances and policies that are business-friendly. There's, and that's not pointing out one specific thing, there, I'm always the person that, listen, you can always do better. I think our city does a lot of things great right now, but there's, we can always do better, and I believe that we have to have the policies and ordinances in place that we're not only getting businesses to open, but also keeping those businesses open.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
I think there's a wide variety of things, but I feel like workforce development is gonna bring more industry into this town. I feel like with the school board, what they're wanting to go for with the CTE programs, that is one of the biggest stepping stones that we will have in bringing more industry into Bristol. It is also being a community that is open to developers and saying, you know, being welcoming, and if that means coming into the city and working with our Chamber and then working with our Council to bring their industry into Bristol. There's three factors, I believe. It is the workforce, our schools, and our subdivisions. We've got a lot of older subdivisions in Bristol, and we've got a lot of housing in Bristol that is older, and I feel as if, that if we could work on those three components, I feel like industry will come to Bristol. It's gonna take a good workforce, it's gonna take new subdivisions, and it's gonna take our schools being able to teach the programs that these companies want to bring into Bristol.
Thank you, Mr. Willinger.
Repeat that question, please.
Certainly. What do you see as the single biggest issue impeding growth in the city of Bristol Tennessee?
I don't know that there's one. I think that it's a combination of things, I think you expressed a few of them. The jobs here, there's plenty of jobs, it's finding the skilled folks to come in here and work. We know we have the issues, people not being able to pass a drug test or get in there and do that, I mean, that's everything. I think it's this, we don't have skill sets that we, we don't have skill sets that we really need to fill the jobs that are available. I'm out of the manufacturing world myself, and I've talked to most manufacturers around here, and the challenge comes from skilled workforce, but even bigger than that, and the most common thing I'm hearing about are the soft skills that don't seem to be in place, that will, that they're hireable folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
I was raised primarily by my grandparents. They taught me that Bristol was a retirement community, and that's, that's what we've become. We've become a retirement community. We need to take a drastic approach and turn the way we look at Bristol around. We don't just need to do better, we need to do our best. And I think the recent expansion at Northeast State was, you know, that's a fantastic step towards building a better future. It's not just getting kids through high school, not just getting them, you know, the trade skills that they need to high school, we need to get, you know, higher education, and we need to get it here locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
I think one thing, there's an impediment we have right now with outside manufacturers looking to come in here, or other businesses as well. You know, today, there's a job fair that's going on in Bristol Tennessee. There's over fifty employers that seeking employees, there's somewhere close to eighteen-hundred, two thousand jobs that are open today, and, you know, some employers that I've talked to myself, you know, they've had trouble finding employees to fill those jobs currently. So until we address those needs, and those needs are, obviously, one of them is going to be trying to create an environment that keeps our youth here in the area and not move away, and also trying to re-educate the people that we have here that are looking to, are looking for work in those sectors, you know, there's sectors in manufacturing, healthcare, there's, you know, construction, so there's plenty of jobs available, but we've just gotta get people educated and thinking that direction. I don't think we want to have that one large employer to come in, you know, quite honestly, I think if we had someone looking, then they'd be, you know, very concerned with what we have.
Thank you. Question number three. And Mr. Vance, you'll answer this first. Do you support public funding for programs, events, and projects that improve the quality of life for Bristol residents? Why or why not?
I absolutely support that, because I feel like if we have good events and good things going on for the community, then we're gonna be a stronger community. I feel like that, you know, if we fund, for an example, a day center for the homeless that want to come in and, you know, get, you know, get back on track on life and, you know, be, you know, counseled and given the options to get back on track and have a better life, I feel like us as a community, that's gonna make us a stronger community. So I am all for us as a city, you know, promoting community programs, promoting things within the city that develops a stronger community, because as a stronger community, we're a better city. So I agree, I do support us helping and funding community events and things to make the city better.
Thank you. Mr. Willinger.
Some of the funding that we've put out there has done a really good job, I think it will continue, the budget calls for more of that, it is community-oriented, and I support that. There are projects maybe that I think have, continue to receive funding, that maybe they could make it on their own, and we could be looking at other options to help another startup thing, maybe like Rhythm and Roots, maybe we could use that money to get something else started.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman.
Could you repeat the whole question, please?
Certainly. Do you support public funding for programs, events, and projects that improve the quality of life for Bristol residents? Why or why not?
Oh, absolutely. Our downtown is, you know, it's an event center. We have Border Bash, Bike Night, attracts, still attracts a lot of people to our downtown. We have a very thriving downtown that's, you know, their focus is events, arts, Paramount, Theater Bristol, you know, those are things that we need to, you know, we need to fund because they make us better as a city.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
Currently, you know, the city funds a lot of those programs today. I think what we have to be more careful with is that, you know, there's a lot of need out there, and it's, you know, where do you apply those funds first and foremost? There's agencies out there that do a wonderful job, and I think as a community or a city, you know, we have to make sure that, you know, first and foremost, people that are in need, I think we need to make sure that they understand that there's agencies out there that can assist them probably quicker than what a city organization can do. But yes, I do support funding of those programs.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
Yes, I would absolutely support and be in favor of programs that support equality of life. I think those are essential to attracting new people to our area, but we have to make sure we are responsible with the taxpayers' dollars, and we're spending those monies in the right places, and, but I would absolutely be in favor of those. We just need to make sure we're spending the people's money correctly.
Thank you. Question number four. If I can get it out. And Mr. Willinger, you'll go first on this question. What is your vision for Bristol in the coming year and five years down the road, and how do you see us getting there? Do you have a particular issue you would like to address, problem you would like to solve, or project you would like to implement? If so, please describe.
Yes, I do. There's, I've spent ten years with SCORE, Service Corps of Retired Executives, trying to help our entrepreneurs and small business owners grow their businesses or get started. And to me, what I want to champion more than anything is the outreach of helping the existing businesses that are already here and attracting the entrepreneurs, and helping those entrepreneurs be able to start and grow. There are so many programs and resources available that can really help, and some of the reports that we've gotten say, hey, I don't know about those programs, who can I talk to? Well, we're covered up in this region with resources, and I've spent years working with those programs and feel like we can really do something. If we get an entrepreneur started here, they stay here. If we can help a business grow, then if they become more profitable, then the wages become more attractive to their workers. So that's my big plan, is during my time and as a City Council person, that's my big focus, is helping what we already have grow and do better.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
In five years, I'd like to see Bristol further develop their industrial parks. We have two fantastic industrial parks, and they've been stagnant for quite some time. We're recently seeing more, more activity at the industrial park off 394, but I think that's sat for too long. We can redirect a lot of the TIF that we're currently using, has a huge attractor to manufacturing, and I think that's one way that we need to start.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
In thinking of my view, excuse me, in thinking of my vision for the future of Bristol, Tennessee, I'm reminded of two legendary figures. They are Walt Disney, his quote was, "Do what you do so well that they will want to see it again and bring to friends." And the other is late great Roberto Clemente, "Anytime you have an opportunity to make a difference in this world and you don't, then you're wasting your time on earth." With that, one of the things that I'd like to really see happen and that we really get behind it is, you know, being able to have the children of this community to be able to find employment here. We don't want them leaving, we want to create the environment that wants them to stay. And, you know, we have to start out by getting together these children and these young people, find out what they like, what they want to do, because they're gonna become our future leaders of this community, and so we've gotta listen to them, and that's one thing that I hope, if I'm elected in four years, that we're able to achieve.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Well, my vision is, we have got to get a younger generation involved in our community, on our boards, all over our city. My vision is to see my daughter come back here after college. And we've got to keep the young people here, whether they're going into a trade out of high school, or whether they come back here after college, but I think that that's gonna be our future of, there's, we just have to have a younger generation involved.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
Where do I see Bristol in the five and ten years? I see Bristol with a stronger downtown, with the gas pedal staying on that. I see a City Council that's working with our school board to develop a CTE program. I see a town where our youth get involved. I see a place where my little girl, when she graduates high school and decides I want to go into college, or I want to learn a trade, and I want to stay here. The future of Bristol, Tennessee is our youth. We've got to give our youth the opportunities to develop, if that's college, go to college, get a degree, or learn a trade, and in doing that, we're gonna sit there and our city's gonna continue to grow, and we're gonna become more successful as a city because our youth is staying. So I'm all for Bristol continuing to develop and finding a way for our children to stay home after they graduate or learn a trade that they would like to have.
Thank you. We'll go to question number five, and Mr. Chapman, you'll go first this time. Many residents and visitors alike see Bristol as one community. Both cities share a name, resources, and work together on many economic and quality of life endeavors. What would your leadership role look like if elected to build a stronger relationship with Bristol, Virginia, to achieve a stronger shared vision for the community?
When a lot of people come to Bristol, you know, they come for, they come for events, they come for the racetrack, they come for Rhythm and Roots, they come for the things that we can provide for them. That's really why we have visitors, because we have, we have a lot to offer. We need to work more diligently with our sister city to make sure that, you know, we maintain the things that people want, the people that, the things that people draw, are drawn here to. I'd like to... I'd like to see more cooperation between the two cities.
Thank you. Mr. Luttrell.
I think, you know, together that both Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee, you know, we have to work together to create a culture of vibrancy in our downtown and actually across the entire city. We have to be able to share and exchange ideas. And, you know, just because one side of, of the state line has something, it's not necessary that both sides has to have the same thing. I think we have to learn to be able to share in certain assets we have in this city. Because neither, neither city is, is able to support and duplicate everything we have. So I would like to see us work closer together on, um, on projects of that nature that, um, it makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
Yes, I believe, we have to work with our sister city. But from my point, we have to also, I'm concerned with Bristol, Tennessee. And, um, we have to make sure that it is a fair and equal balance on whether the services that we're sharing or what we're doing. And, um, I want, we've worked well, I believe, throughout the years. We can continue on. But I want to make sure that it's equal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vance.
The, the relationship with Bristol, Virginia. So y'all know that Bristol, Virginia is in a hardship right now. I really do feel for those guys over there. I feel like as a city, we should help our sister city in recovering, as long as it doesn't affect our taxpayers. They have a long road ahead and as a councilman, I am more than willing to sit down with the council of Bristol, Virginia and come and work with them and listen to them and, and work with them the best that I can. But I also know that they've got to be held accountable for the things that they have to provide for on their side of town. So I am all for a great relationship with Bristol, Virginia, but they've got to be held accountable. And I'm all, and I'm also, but I'm also open to listening and being there for them.
Thank you. Mr. Willinger.
Well, we are Bristol and for those of us that live here, we don't pay much attention actually to the line. But, you know, those folks that are over in city council right now have been left with one heck of a mess. They didn't create it. It was created some time ago and it's going to take a while for them to come back. But I'll promise you, they will come back. And you know Bristol, Tennessee was in a similar situation, what, eight, 10 years ago, something like that? And, uh, we need to hang in there together with them. I know each one of those people on city council and they want to work with us and our job is to be right there with them. Now, I agree with you that, yeah, we don't want our money going over there, but there's a lot of things that we can do together to help just, you know, sometimes just moral support can go a long way in, in working with them. And I have a positive outlook for them and they will make it. They're going to come back. Everything's going to be just fine. But instant gratification takes too long. They'll make it, okay? So I believe that we need to be part of that and really reach out and see what we can do. It's up to us and they would love it.
Thank you. Got a question number six. And Mr. Luttrell, you get to answer first. Do you believe the homeless population is an issue in Bristol, particularly in downtown Bristol? If yes, what strategies do you feel the city should support to address this?
Okay, first and foremost, after living here, you know, basically all my life, you know, the homeless situation has, has always been here in Bristol. Uh, it appears to be that there's more of it today than what there was before. I do know that there are programs or there's task force that's been getting together to try to address this situation. I've not been involved with any of those, but I understand they're working very hard to try to come up with some solutions. Yes, I do think that as a city, we need to support that and try to resolve it. Now, saying that also, you know, you've got to look at two things. There's, um, there's people that really need help. And then you also have some people, they choose that way of life. And I know personally have reached out to some folks in the past and, you know, they're, they're good with what, what they're doing. So, uh, so you have to be careful with that. But yes, we do need support and resolve that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
I feel that as Christians, we have to be compassionate for the homeless. But we also have got to be compassionate for our downtown businesses and also the consumers that are going downtown. I believe part of the issue is with all of the services that are located within a short walk of downtown. And, um, but we do need to address this and we need to help these people. And like Malin said, some choose that life, others are placed in that life. So, um, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Vance.
The homeless population is definitely an issue that continues to grow. You can see it downtown throughout the day. I'm, if I'm elected city councilman, I'm, I would like to advocate looking at a daytime center for these ladies and gentlemen, for the people that want to do it. The people, because I know that there's people that don't want it and then there's people that do want it. I'm all about getting them rehabbed if that's counseling and, you know, working with them with their issues and, and working, helping them work through it. And then also training them on resumes and, and getting them back into the workforce. Because I, like I said earlier, you know, the homeless need a chance. You know, these, these, these ladies and gentlemen need a chance. And I, I feel strongly about working with each and every one of them to give them a chance. Because, you know, we've all had bad luck before. We've all been down. And we've all, most of us probably had somebody to pick us up. So I feel like as a city, it could be a joint effort with the community in helping the homeless and, and getting them back on their feet.
Thank you. Mr. Willinger.
I believe our city has done a phenomenal job of trying to accommodate, work with and support those that are less fortunate, that have come here for one reason or another. And we've got some phenomenal programs going on and we're trying to do some, do some things to, um, better, better support and eliminate them. You think of Friday and Saturday nights when you come downtown. It's, uh, it's very concerning for our visitors and the citizens as our streets are crowded with those that are here for dinner or, um, something like that. But we also need to address the other issue. Bristol has earned a reputation of sending, uh, having people sent here. They come in, uh, by numerous forms of transportation. We've seen it. My wife and I used to own the Corner Dog House. They'd get off of the train, come up there and somebody's already told them, hey, if you go to the Corner Dog, they'll feed you. You can go get showers here and the services that are available. So I, I think we could take a look at maybe, um, are we going to continue to open our arms and encourage, um, those that choose, like you say, not all of them are homeless by choice, but they do come here because it's an easy way to live.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman.
Yes, um, regardless of the situation that someone experiences to become homeless, it's still our, our responsibility to help them up. Whether that be through, you know, crisis counseling, mental health support, drug addiction. You know, we as a city are better by taking care of those less fortunate. We need to work with the independent agencies, the Haven Arrests, the Salvation Army. They're wonderful resources, but we can do better and we need to do better. The construction of a day center has been tossed around quite a bit. And I think that would be an excellent stepping stone into helping, you know, our injured population.
Thank you. We'll go on to question number seven. And Mr. Turner, you get to answer first. Research indicates that the overall educational attainment of a community drives the economic prosperity of that community. What is your vision for supporting education in Bristol, Tennessee?
I believe that, uh, we have to support our education system, our schools. And, um, I think the CTE programs is going to be, um, a major part of this, of a lot of the kids that get out of school. They do not want to go to college. And as we were talking earlier, there's, with the job fair, there's, there's jobs here. We need those people to fill them. And I believe that that's how we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Vance.
I am a strong proponent of the education system. As a city councilman, I want to work with the education system to make education better for our students. Look at making the schools safer with SRO officers and develop and continuing to look at developing with Ms. Penley, a CTE program. That is our future. Our future is on the line with these kids. You know, like I, you know, a kid doesn't want to go to college. They can either go to college or they don't. And how, how, I know when I was in high school, I was, I was told, go to college, go to college. It's the best thing. And college wasn't for me all the way. So I got out and I started working. And I feel as if, you know, if we give these kids an outlet with the education system, with the school board to say, okay, I don't want to go to college. I want to learn a trade. Then it'll not only develop our school and keep our kids here, but it'll continue to fill those jobs that that job fair had, that that job fair, the Bristol Motor Speedway was there today. It'll continue to fill those jobs. So I am definitely for a strong educational system.
Thank you. Mr. Willinger.
Repeat the question, please.
Certainly. Research indicates that the overall educational attainment of a community drives the economic prosperity of that community. What is your vision for supporting education in Bristol, Tennessee?
Well, I mean, you got to. Education's everything, whether it be in the trades or going on to college. Education's everything and of course we have to support it. But I also think we may need to look at the parents of the children's, children as well. And involve the parents a little bit more in how they view education and the choices that are available. We've seen what's happened in the past as each, each of you pointed out, you know, going to college. But I really feel that, um, our parents have to assume some responsibility for what goes on in our schools. And, um, that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman.
Well, of course, I'm a huge proponent of public education. I have many, many, many teachers who I consider close personal friends of mine. And I do feel that, you know, we need to involve the parents. But where are our parents? Our parents are working two jobs. Bristol does not have an economy where one parent can stay at home with the children and one parent can work and they thrive. Our kids see that, you know, they're, they're beaten down. They're tired. They see that their parents are tired and, you know, they've lost hope. We've let them down. You know, our past, you know, generations in the past have let our future, our future down. We need to work on improving our school systems, making us, um, more attractive to manufacturing, making us more attractive to technology, using the resources that we have and bringing those jobs here so that kids see their parents excelling. So that kids see their parents live in a better life and they want to live a better life. And they want to do that in Bristol. And I don't think that's what we have.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Luttrell.
I was very pleased at the presentation earlier by the school board members that are seeking reelection and, and seeking election, that their passion that they have with the school system, the passion they have with the educators and the passion they have with the facilities. And yes, I'm too a strong proponent of our education system. You know, we have to do more and to say what that more is right now, I can't take. But, you know, we have to work together with the school systems. We have to work together with our communities. And we have to work together with our state legislators to build, provide the needs that we have to have for these children because they are our future.
Thank you. And, uh, question number eight, which I believe is going to be our final question tonight. Mr. Vance, you'll go first. Regionalism-focused conversations have been gaining momentum over the last year. These are designed to create a stronger economy through collaboration. Do you believe working collaborative, collaboratively as a region should be a priority and why or why not?
My thoughts on regionalism is this, the concept of, concept of wanting to market all three of the cities, it makes sense. But I think when the plans are being made for this, we need to make sure there's a fine balance when it comes to representation of each city. Bristol has come a long way and needs to always be represented to the fullest. So with regionalism, I, I will say that I'm for it as long as Bristol, Tennessee is being represented at the table. Because Bristol, Tennessee has come way too far to, to be put behind. So I'm all for regionalism as long as Bristol, Tennessee has a seat at the table.
Thank you. Mr. Willinger.
Hey, we got to keep our own flag, but there are great advantages to looking at regionalism, not to forfeit who we are or what we are individually, but collectively. I think there's a lot of things we can do and regionalism doesn't necessarily, um, exclude any one area or try and include all of us. I think that sharing our information, like we work with Bristol. We can work with Kingsport, Johnson City, and nobody ever talks about Abingdon being part of this that all of us can benefit. I once, earlier I talked about, uh, the travel and tourism. There, that's being shared all the time. If you want regionalism and understand what it is, that's a portion of it. But again, I want to say, I don't want to give up our flag, but I think there's a lot more we can do with the communities that surround us that all of us can benefit from. The jobs we look at here, there may not be in Bristol. They, we have workers that go to Abingdon, Kingsport, Johnson City and all kinds of other areas around here. So it's, it doesn't have to be just about Bristol.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman.
Bristol's a great place to live. That's, that's, that's what it comes down to. Bristol's a fantastic place. But it's become not a great place to work. You know, we, we need to rely on, on our neighbors. Um, we need to build, we need to build stronger ties with our community, with Johnson City, with Washington County, with Sullivan County. When you think about going to work and you think about manufacturing, you mostly think about Domtar. You think about Eastman. You know, those are in Kingsport. You know, if, if we don't have, if we don't have those to rely on, then, you know, we have to look further. Bristol's become a center for service. We've become a service industry capital of, you know, the mountain empire. And while we do need to work with, you know, our, our neighbors, you know, Bristol needs to maintain its identity and we need to, um, we need to become more attractive.
Thank you. Mr. Luttrell.
You know, sometimes there, there's greater strength in numbers, but at the same time, you have to be careful with that. Uh, overall, I feel like that, you know, we, we've already been doing a pretty good job. We've been cooperating as a community with our, uh, partners around the region already. You know, I, I don't have enough detail on it to say one way or other, that I can support it wholeheartedly. But, um, but the concept is great, but I, I really need to have more detail. And I think that's going to be coming in weeks, months to come. But while saying this and have transparency, um, I let everyone know I was already been contacted as probably many others as well to participate on a phone interview, uh, about this subject. So, uh, hopefully I'll learn more from that and I can make a more informed decision at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
Yes, like Malin said, there, there is strength in numbers and, um, regionalism I think can be a good thing. We, regionalism is larger, I feel like, than Bristol, Kingsport and Johnson City. And Bristol has to have a seat at the table. We have to have someone there and we have to listen. And I, I believe that everyone else in the region has to have a seat at the table and everyone working together and everyone having a voice. And, um, if elected, I would definitely be that voice for Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you. I did say that was going to be the last question, but we have a couple of minutes. I'm going to throw one more in there. We threw some extra ones in just in case. I know y'all are thrilled about that. Um, this would go to Mr. Willinger first.
Thanks.
We've already kind of answered that one already. As a council member, how do you propose supporting small business growth and sustainability? Specifically, do you see entrepreneurship, education and support as an opportunity for growth in Bristol, Tennessee?
Finally, my question. Hey, I think I- Finally, my question. Hey, I think I covered this earlier. I'm all about small business and entrepreneurialism. I have spent at least 12 years being involved with that. I continue to do it frequently. And the resources that we have available, services like SCORE and there was the Virginia Department of Business Assistance, the Entrepreneur Express, I got to be involved with that. We went around and spoke to over 3,000 people to help them figure out a way to start their business. We've gone even into the, gone to prisons where you, when, when your kids get out, they're supposed to be able to find a job. They ain't finding a job, okay? So what do they do? They think about, can I be a mechanic? How can I start a mowing business? Can I be a barber? There are some other things that they can look at. And those are entrepreneurs too that can, that want, want to succeed. And that is the one thing that we can really do. We are resource-rich in being able to help a small business and an entrepreneur. I read, I just read a report that said, hey...
I'm Tom. I'm afraid, Tom. Sorry.
Oh, no, that ain't right.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
When we talk about supporting small businesses and what we can do, you know, to help, you know, the entrepreneurs in Bristol, we first look at downtown Bristol. It's thriving. You know, we've, lots of renovation has gone into downtown Bristol. And then we look at the Pinnacle and how, you know, how that's, you know, come to be the, the gem of Bristol now. But what we leave out is State Street. We leave out the entire State Street. There's, from the Chamber of Commerce, we're seeing some, some construction on a new hotel after the car dealership, after Bill Gattan's. We see, you know, dilapidated buildings. We see, you know, busted-out windows. We see, you know, paint peeling off our buildings. There's, there's a huge strip of Bristol that's been forgotten about. And if we can put millions into the Pinnacle, hundreds of thousands into downtown, why can't we offer incentives to build our State Street?
Thank you. Mr. Luttrell?
I think if you look back in time and, and, you know, I'm not a historian by no means, but if you look to the word entrepreneur, I don't know if you'll find that back when, when, you know, Columbus set sail and then, you know, first landed here in the, in the country. You know, if you look at what people done back at that time, you know, they didn't really consider themselves a small business. But then as we look back and we think of it, that's what they were. And our country has thrived from small businesses, startup businesses. And I think as a community, as a city, that, you know, we have to be able to try to go out and try to help and foster these small businesses, the startup. You know, the worst thing you can have is a business starting up and for it to fail. And I think as other business owners get more involved with some of these startup companies and go out and talk to these folks and ask them, you know, what their needs are. I know there's programs going on that we're doing some of that now, but I do think that we need to expand on that and, and do more of it.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I think most, all businesses at some point or time are a small business and a startup. But I believe that one thing that we can do is to help them and going back to our policies and ordinances that are business-friendly and not only for the business to start, but also to keep it open and to help them thrive. But yes, I would definitely support those.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
I'm definitely a supporter of entrepreneurship. I feel like as a city, we need to continue to, to be a city that's open to entrepreneurs coming into the city of Bristol to say, hey, I'm willing to work with you. When it comes, like you said, regulations and, and stuff like that, as a city, we need to look at the business that's coming in and, and work with them to not have so many regulations on them so they can open their business. And then once they're established as a business, you know, work, work with them, listen to them, listen to their needs, work with them and, and continue to help their business grow. And, you know, that's, that's the one thing that as a city that we are doing, but we need to continue to do is with these small businesses to always be a representation for them. And when they need help, they come to us and they say, hey, guys, we're, we're having issues here. Is there something that you can help us with as a city council and as a chamber?
Thank you. And that does officially close the questioning portion. We're going to go to closing statements. We'll begin with Mr. Chapman first. You have two minutes. With 20 seconds left, you'll have the yellow button again.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You know, we're here, we're here for you. We're here to serve you. We're your elected officials or we, we want to be your elected officials. We have, we have a long road ahead of us. You know, Bristol has a lot of problems, but we have a lot of ideas. You've heard a lot of, you've heard a lot of things come from this panel tonight. And I think one thing that Bristol needs is fresh ideas, something fresh. After 10 years in the military, I've traveled all over the world. I've lived in towns much smaller than Bristol, lived in cities much larger than Bristol. I would like to think that I can bring that, that experiences, you know, the small-town feel, the large-city feel. I can bring those ideas back to Bristol and help Bristol grow. The first year that the Pinnacle opened cost the taxpayers almost $90,000 in decreased the sales tax revenue. It's, it's a wonderful attraction to the city, but we need to look at the financial cost to our taxpayers. You know, we need to, we need to take care of the people who made Bristol great. We need to take care of the people who educated my generation, who educated your all's generation. We need to take care of the people who built the buildings. We need to take care of the people who paved the roads, who laid the pipes for our water system, for our sanitation system. We need to take care of the people who strung our, strung our electric wires, who, you know, who built our schools. That we're going to do through, through a sales tax freeze on all of our residents. The state of Tennessee offers a sales tax or a property tax freeze for residents over the age of 65 who live below poverty level. That's, that's a considerable, that's a considerable amount of Bristol residents. It's easy to pay for, but it shows, it shows the people who built Bristol that we respect what they did, that we know where we came from and we came from what they provided us. I'd like to ask for your vote. My name is David Chapman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luttrell?
My top focus area, if elected, will be to promote the continued economic vitality of Bristol. This encompasses a wide variety of activities, but as a city government, we must do our part to invest in our own continued growth and development. Invest in or incent projects that align with our future strategic goals, objectives and visions. Make progress towards the implementation of projects to improve the quality of life for Bristol's residents and visitors alike. Support the current employers while simultaneously planning for the workforce and labor needs of the future. We must promote the importance of career and technical education in our schools by partnering with, when possible, with higher regional education resources to develop programs and curricula that will ensure a consistent supply of skilled labor. Face the reality head-on that Bristol's future vitality is dependent upon growing our population and lowering, lowering our community average age. We must recruit employers that will attract millennial-aged professionals and their families to move here. Develop amenities that will encourage our youngest residents to either stay and enter the workforce after high school or go to college locally or return home to Bristol after attending a college elsewhere to start their careers. Promote a culture of vibrancy and energy. Further elevate the importance of a diverse array of arts, entertainment and dining options, particularly in the downtown area. Follow the lead of communities like Asheville, Nashville, Greensville, South Carolina in promoting Bristol as a pet-friendly community. Actively engage emerging young leaders in our community. Welcome them to the table to determine what type of community they will live in and lead in the future and listen to what they have to say. In order to maintain forward progress, the city must be able to adequately competitively compensate its employees or risk losing our best, brightest and bravest talent to other communities, limiting our capacity to provide quality, public services and safety. Last but not least, we have to ensure that every last penny of taxpayer dollars are spent responsibly by the city as well as by the other entities that are supported by city funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
It's often noted in politics that candidates say what you think, what they think you want to hear. And sometimes that may be easier. I, however, speak for my heart and I wholeheartedly believe in Bristol. It's my life's goal to make this city so great that my daughter is destined to return here after college so that she may raise her family here just like my parents raised me and their parents raised them. Sorry. Bristol is my forever home. And I'd love to give my, the same to my child and yours. I've worked hard my entire life. And it will not stop here. I'll research the issues, poll the residents, and I'll make decisions that are best for Bristol. If you want someone who will be a worker and a fighter for Bristol and will listen to the people, I'd appreciate your vote for Vince Turner. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vance.
In closing, guys, you've heard a lot of views and a lot of things we want to do as, as, as candidates running for Bristol. My biggest hope for this wonderful city is that we can continue to grow and take care of the people that are here now and take care of the future generations to come. I believe in getting young people involved. That'll make a wonderful difference for this wonderful city. If you elect me as your next city councilman, you'll gain a hard worker. My father taught me when I was 14 years old, if you want anything in life, you're going to have to go out here and work for it, son. So I've been working since I was 14 years old. You're going to have someone that'll represent all people of Bristol, Tennessee. All people will be represented by me. I'm very transparent. I'll listen to your needs. I'll listen to your wants. And I'll do my best that, I'll do the best that I can on the council to make your voice heard. And I'm Miles Vance and I've lived here my whole life. And I, I've seen Bristol at a point where it was slow and I worried about my future. I worry about my friends' future. I've seen my friends leave. I've seen my friends not come back. So I'm asking you for your vote and your support because tonight, guys, and from now on, our future matters. Good night and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Willinger.
I'll be brief. We're not from here. Sherri and I moved here in 2003. However, since 1984, I've been working with all the manufacturers in this area. Was a machine tool distributor. And I've come to love this place and finally persuaded my wife after, well, we got transferred up to New Jersey for three years and, man, we couldn't get out of there quickly enough. Bristol is bigger than downtown State Street and nobody's mentioned much about that. Let's talk about the volunteer parkway, the industrial parks that already exist. There is more to Bristol than downtown. And we need to, we, we don't talk about it, but we need to do something about it. There have been issues regarding the trees that have to be planted that you can't see the businesses across the street and, and little things like that. But the small business owners, they bring those issues up. So we, we, we can't just think of downtown Bristol as Bristol. And really, there's, there are two things that I really want you to know about me. I believe in and stand for the conservative views, culture and values of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. That's what brought me here. And as a councilman, my primary, one of my primary functions will be to listen. And being a machine tool kind of guy, boy, you better listen when the engineers talk. So I listen, I'll find solutions and most of all, be a good steward of our money. That's it.
Thank you. That does conclude our event. I will say, there is no question, for those of you over here, I think would agree, there is no question. We have two terrific slate of officers for both school board and city council and who have all done a great jobs sitting up here tonight and answering questions. Their passion is undeniable. And the fact that you all are, are stepping up to serve is tremendous, in my opinion. It is a sacrifice you make. It is a service to this community. And for that, I thank each and every one of you all and our school board candidates who are still, still here as well. So let's give them a big round of applause. One last thing, one quick thing. I just want to thank all of you all who took your time to come out here tonight and support candidates. And I think we don't want to forget one big thing. Go and vote on Tuesday, May 21st. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The Bristol First Program was implemented in order to recognize employees for their valued service and commitment to reaching above and beyond their duties.
By going the extra mile for the citizens of our great city.
As a past winner, I am honored to be recognized by residents of the community we serve. If you are a citizen who has received assistance from a...